All right. Good evening, everyone. It is six P M. So at this point, we'll begin our virtual workshop. For June twenty seven, twenty twenty three. Let the record reflect that all council members are in attendance. And we will begin, if you will join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this point, we will open up a public comment. I want to remind everyone to please provide your address. And make sure you give us your name and address so we can have all of your information reflected in the record. You'll need to raise your hand virtually and we'll call you out.
Mayor, we want to do presentations or do public?
You know, we we can, Robert. I have no objection to that. I the only my only consideration was the fact. There's there's pros and cons to that. My only consideration was the fact that I wanted to make sure that council gets an opportunity to discuss this. And get their questions answered. But let's go ahead and do the presentation that way everyone will have the latest and greatest information. And then a little bit of council discussion and then the opportunity for everyone to public.
Thank you, Mayor. And the best way to start, I think, is going to be looking back on where we started back in twenty nineteen. And I hope everybody can hear me and then please, if you can all remain muted. Through the presentation and throughout the town council discussion, that'd be great. I know John Fitzgibbon is online, so is Tony Elliott Moore, and we have Heather Ramos, who's our legal counsel on as well. So we're able to answer any and all questions that you may have. The first thing I want to do is take a look back into our meeting back in January of two thousand twenty three. And I think this might answer some of the questions that people still have outstanding or just starting to join the conversation. And even though this is, I think, our eleventh public meeting that we're holding on this topic. But the background, again, I'm sorry for a little delay in time here because I'm trying to be a minister and to present at the same time. But the agreement that is entered into between the West Orange Healthcare District and the Rotary, Inc., which is different from the Windermere Rotary Club, that are entered into agreement on May fifth, two thousand twenty one for a million dollar contract. And you can see how the payments were going to be divvied up throughout that term of that contract. And then the town entered into an agreement with the Rotary, Inc. after that. Because the money is going from the district, which is a million dollars, going to go to the Rotary. And then the Rotary is going to build the pavilion and then give it to the town. So that's why the town had her enter into the agreement. And there were some conditions that are part of the agreement that we'll get into in a little bit. But again, this is an agreement that was between the Windermere Rotary, Inc. and the town of Windermere and the Healthy West Orange District. Again, this is not anything that was entered into with Windermere Rotary Club. So back in January of twenty nineteen, this idea was brought up and a committee was created. And that committee consisted of a former council member for a SAB D B C liaison. Matt, a teen L R P representative, which is John Fitzgibbon, is also our town engineer and our third party consultant over reviewing this project. Rotary liaison, which is Byron Sutton, town resident liaison, Stephen Weathers, and then are existing at the time. Public Works Director Scott Brown. So they met on January fifteenth, February eighth, eleventh, March eleventh, March fifteenth. And then again, in March of twenty nineteen, Rotary sent a proposal for the to the Windermere, we called it the Pavilion Committee at the time. And then they had a meeting on May of two thousand nineteen, June twenty first, twenty nineteen. They sent over revised plans. Again, you can see all the various meetings. The meetings that I want to show that are highlighted are the ones that are underscored. In February twenty seventh of twenty twenty, that was our first public meeting that we held relative to the subject matter. Or sorry, twenty twenty. And then May nineteenth, the R B took a look at as well. And both of those entities went ahead and recommended approval of the conceptual plan of the pavilion at those times. And then Town Council on July fourteenth, they approved the proposal for the Healthy West Orange Pavilion, the design, the look, the feel, so on and so forth. So all of this was done prior to the contracts being entered into between the funding agency and Rotary, Inc. So on May of twenty twenty one, that's when Rotary signed the agreement with the Healthy West Orange District. And then we signed ours in June, and that was the agreement between the town and Rotary, Inc. And again, here you can see the layout of all the meetings that were had relative to this topic matter. And the ones that are underlined or underscored are the ones that were public meetings, either virtual or live. So there's a special called Town Council Meeting. There was Town Council Approval when it came to the design build. There's a public information workshop on January twenty twenty three. And after that, we had a L R P meeting in January of twenty twenty three. Then we had April Public Input Workshop on twenty twenty three as well. So there's been eleven total meetings, including this one, that have been made public over the last three years that this project has been discussed. Now, a lot of the questions that came up, you know, not only from prior meetings, prior discussions, but also from the emails that we received and some of the input that we received at some of the meetings that we held. Can these funds be used elsewhere for different projects? And the answer to that is no. It can only be used to construct the pavilion as specified in the grant agreement between Rotary, Inc. and West Orange Healthcare District. This does include certain terms like a concession, a stage area, and then restrooms. Is the pavilion going to be owned by the Rotary, Inc.? No, it's not. It's going to be turned over to the town of Windermere. Does Rotary, Inc. have exclusive rights to the concession stand? They would, but it would only be for Healthy West Orange events and/or Rotary events, and that would still have to go through a special events permitting process. So what would be the process for additional events? And this is a huge concern for the residents, especially in Forests that are in close proximity. And a lot of people that are experiencing a lot of traffic from a lot of the events that are ongoing right now. That's one of the reasons, you know, we put a pause on the food trucks is because number one is slower in the summer months. Number two, we want to give a little reprieve to those surrounding residents with some of the parking issues and traffic issues. Now, we have created more of a way to enforce the parking when it comes to those events in the future. We got a bunch of no parking signs. And we're going to be able to adhere to that with the amount of police protection that we're going to add to a lot of the special events. But anyway, when it comes to a special event permit, what would happen is, let's say that I wanted to put on an event over at Town Square. Let's say my charity is the Windermere Police Department Foundation. And what I would do is submit a special event permit to the town requesting that event. And depending upon the number of people, usually if it's over maybe two hundred fifty, three hundred people, and it's going to be utilizing the outdoor space, we would take it to Town Council. Now, prior to that Town Council meeting, what we would do is hold a public input workshop. So we notify everybody within five hundred feet of the special event. Hold a Zoom meeting with those concerned residents on, you know, what is the event? How long is the event? You know, what kind of impacts are we looking at from the event? So we can address those concerns either with the applicant and or the residents. Then if there is a if the person that's applying is receiving that input and willing to make some changes, then we would take it to Town Council for them to discuss and approve or deny or amend whatever the request is. So it's going to be a very different process in the future when it comes to special events, especially of, you know, events that we were having experiencing with the success of Pet Fest, the Windermere Art Fair, Windermere Wine and Dine, you know, Run on the Lakes, the various events that we have throughout the year. And again, you know, we want to make sure that we're informing the residents of what's going on and also hearing what they have to say. So that goes into not only, you know, how will we do the events in the future? But a lot of people are like, okay, if you build it, they're going to come. Meaning that, you know, just because we have a new pavilion with restrooms and concession stand, then we're going to hold all these different events, and then also we're going to have larger events. Again, that would be the process that anybody that's trying to have an event would have to go through. And it's it's a lot tougher than, there's more hurdles that you have to get for a special event permit, I believe, here than you would anywhere else. Because again, we're going to have that public input prior to going to Town Council. Now, will town managers change in the future? Yes. Will Town Councils change in the future? Yes. But they're still going to have to adhere or listen to the residents in at least two two times prior to an event occurring to have some sort of that stopgap or relieve any tensions of, okay, well, if it's you know, a bunch of council members that are, you know, outside the town proper, they're they're not living within the the core district in the town square, that they're just going to go ahead and approve everything. You know, this gives you a voice. And again, they have to listen to the residents when it comes to some of these things, or else they won't get voted back into office.
Are you changing your screen? Because we only just see the agenda.
Oh, yeah, I did change it.
No, sir. We're not seeing anything. Just the agenda.
You see now?
Yes, sir. Now we do.
Okay. Well, again, here's all the meetings that we had. You see that there's a lot of them. And I was pretty much right here when it came to what is the future process going to be when we look at approving or denying future events? Again, will the town be approving competing events? And that was one of the things that I know is a concern of Parks and Recreation. There were, because Healthy West Orange, they wanted an event that would be, you know, promoting health in the in the area, in the surrounding area. And if they were wanting to do a run, we would have to say no, because we currently already have two runs that are sponsored by the Parks and Recreation Committee. And when I discuss the various events with Healthy West Orange, their intent for events would be yoga in the park. You know, Tai Chi, stuff like that, you know, some some lower, lower scale events that I don't think a lot of people have any objection to. You know, if it's going to be lower than that number that we're thinking about as far as large events. Now, they may have a premier event, but that would have to go through the process of approval with a special event permit. Just because they funded it, they would still have to get that special event permit, but they are allowed one event per year. But we'd have to work on, okay, what is that event going to be? Will there be additional parking constructed behind the pavilion? No. That parking that's there is going to remain, and we're going to deviate or divert the parking over to Fifth and Forest. And again, in future events that we hold, we're going to try to see how we can take care of the traffic as much as possible or as best we can. Exercise, they were thinking about having, we're having exercise stations and exercise areas around the pavilion. The town will continue to work with Rotary, Inc. on the best locations for that, whether it's going to be exactly there or it can be in Pocket Park, which is on Fifth Avenue. So here was what was originally proposed, not only at the January workshop, but also all the way back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty to Town Council at the time. And again, you see the raid, the stage area, the minimums bathrooms, the family restrooms, concession and storage. And that's what the proposal was looking like at that time. Now, fast forward to today. So after all those workshops and after all those meetings that we had, you know, we listened to the community and the surrounding residents, and we tried to work with Rotary as best we could with a lot of the comments that we were receiving. Now, the comments that we were receiving was, you know, number one, if you build it, they will come. Number two, you know, it's not, it's going to create more noise, not divert the noise. Three, they like the open space area. They just don't want anything out there. You know, four was pretty much, we just want bathrooms. So Town Council during the April meeting, they consented to the fact that, okay, let's see what the district and Rotary, Inc. would be willing, be willing to agree to. Because again, if this if this project does not go forward, then the town would have to repay Rotary, Inc., which would go then go to the district, not the district, but Healthy West Orange now, between a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that would be the repayment for the work that's already been done. And how do we come up to a hundred and fifty thousand? Currently, they've spent about ninety seven thousand, and some of the invoices that they currently have would bring up to that one fifty number. Now, if the council decides tonight to not move forward with the project, then myself and probably Heather would go back to the district or Rotary and say, listen, you know, let's go through all the invoices and make sure that everything that was spent was, number one, it was justified for the project. Number two, you know, it was something that was approved. So we want to make sure that every dollar that we're paying back was something that was justified in the very beginning. But that number is between a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Now, you might say, okay, well, there's a fifty thousand dollar sway there. But, you know, from my perspective, I don't believe that fifty thousand dollars is going to make it or break it as far as a discussion relative to whether you not move forward with the project, worrying me for the project due to the fact this is a project that's going to, you know, could last a generation. So. So after the meeting that I had with the district and with Rotary, they agreed to amend the size, shape and scale of the project. You know, so there's various things that the Town Council can do tonight. So they can proceed with the forty five percent plans and the construction documents that they had consented to or approved in the past. They can proceed with the one that is a reduced size scale. They can proceed with some other new concept. Or go ahead and not move forward with the project at all, and then the town would begin paying back those funds. Again, it's going to be between a hundred and a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Robert, are you changing your slides again?
Oh, no, it's not showing again?
No, we're still seeing the the first set of the first drawings, the large one.
Okay. You think I'd have it by now? You see now? That was it?
It's moving now.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Sorry about that. So again, you know, those major key points that we talked about from previous conversations with the residents and with council and stuff, trying to address those concerns. So here's the layout of what can be approved tonight or consented to tonight. And this is what staff would really want, you know, direction on. So the cannons are being kicked even further down. So we proceed with the forty five that we already pretty much have with the one that was presented to you prior to January of two thousand twenty three. Proceed with the reduced size and scope project. Or proceed with some other new concept or do nothing and then pay the money back to Rotary, which would then go to the district or not the district, but Healthy West Orange. So here's the original plan, the forty five percent. The comments again that we heard was just too big, it was too high. You know, we, you know, certain events would not use them, I think, one and done, and wouldn't be using this area. They think it'd be better if it would. They could use it for additional restaurant space and area, an open area, and also would help with their musical on the lakes that they did last year, and they're intending on doing this year. They'd have given more space to do that and wouldn't really accommodate an orchestra. The same thing with Pet Fest. Pet Fest stated that they probably wouldn't use it because they could use that more open airspace for additional vendors and for additional use by the by the event. So this is the forty five percent plans that were proposed back in January. And then here's the revised design, which is fifteen thousand four hundred and six feet. Pretty much has the same type of look and feel. Again, it's hard to really dive into the aesthetics when it comes to paint colors, tones, you know, stuff that can be used to really enhance the look, you know, one of the things that people have made a comment about at one point was, you know, it looked very bland. It didn't match Cal Palmer, didn't match Town Hall. Those are things that can be included when it gets to further in design as far as the exact look of what you're going to see. That comes past the forty five percent plans, but you can see it's more symmetrical. Right here. So you can see my cursor is more symmetrical as opposed to the previous design that had a longer side to the north. Now, this one, it has the stage, bathrooms on either side, storage, the family restroom's here. And right here, this wouldn't necessarily be a concession stand. It'd be a multi-purpose area, so it could be used for storage. It can be used, you know, for people getting ready if they're going to be performing on the stage. It can be used again, you know, not for what we typically think of as concessions, but if somebody wanted to sell tickets out of there, whether it be for the event itself or for a raffle, if they want to sell merchandise out of that area if they can. So the town is not looking at, or not the town, but the intent is not to put equipment in there. That would be considered a concession stand. There would be sinks, yes, in case, you know, people want to get in there and get ready for whatever performance. But there wouldn't be a full service kitchen or any of those types of items in that area. So when I say multi-purpose room, that's what it's going to be used for. There's multi-purposes for it. Now, I may say, okay, well, if you sell hamburgers and hot dogs, that is a concession stand. But yes, but that could only be for maybe certain events. And, you know, right now with food trucks and stuff like that, you may want to reduce those kind of expenses. But again, you know, it's going to be multipurpose, and we don't want to do a bait and switch towards, you know, people are like, well, it's going to be a full-blown kitchen or anything like that. No, any savings that we can absorb through reducing this footprint and, you know, materials, then we can put that back into enhancing the facade and replantings of tree and vegetation around the pavilion. But again, you can see how it's more symmetrical here. Now, we did discuss the possibility of eliminating this sidewalk here. And then this portion of the basketball court here, that would give you more green space, but that would be another amendment in the future, because this is the half court that's right here. But that would give you a ton of additional area for lawn seating if you wanted to. So the original community room that was there, it was fourteen hundred square feet. The original design that came through, you can see in the top portion, was nineteen hundred square feet. And the more shrunk down version is fifteen thousand four hundred and six feet. So it's a hundred forty six feet bigger than the old community room that was there. And you can see the various site plan comparisons. Now, this was not a Hail Mary, but an idea that was proposed out there from, I think, both Rotary, Inc. and John Fitzgibbon was this type of structure. You know, if there's no agreement towards the amended or the original design, you know, will Town Council even entertain an additional design, you know, because additional designs are going to cost money? You know, these architects and project managers aren't going to be working for free. So any amendments, any timeframe extensions, you know, is going to cost a lot more money. So we should be conscious of that. But I know that's something that you guys can discuss. So again, this was the original. But the facade pretty much stays the same, but it's a shrunk down version. And then here's the new one. See the trees in the back? And then here's one of the things that people were really concerned about as far as the height. So the top of the stage is going to be one foot six inches. To the very top of the roof is going to be nineteen feet and thirteen and a half or about thirteen and a half feet for the top lower roof. And when we have discussions, I keep going back and forth with all of these. But here you get a scale of the size and scope of it with the trees in the back and with the people in the front, you can figure out, okay, well, you know, this is what it would look like if it was to be approved at this new design. And basically, that's all I have, Mayor. If you want any technical questions, we can get into that. The agreement was a three-year agreement, and it was entered into in twenty twenty one. So the project has a deadline of May of twenty twenty four. But understand that we had a pandemic in between that. So I think there's, you know, some movement on that if it were to get to that point, since it is already in July, and that's a short timeframe when it comes to design approval and construction of this facility. So I'll turn it over to you and be more happy answering any questions that we have. And again, Tony's on, John is on, and Heather is on as well.
Thank you, Robert. I appreciate the overview. Council, at this time, it is is totally up to you whether you would like to have public input at this point or whether we would like to have a discussion, then some public input, and then wrap up with some further council discussion. Any thoughts on that, Tony?
I vote I vote for public input, since they've already raised their hand. I might as well hear them. Same here.
Yeah, that is more than fine. All right. So it sounds, it sounds like there's no objections to. I think you were the winner tonight, Mr. Krenz. I believe I saw your hand go up first.
Okay, I'm in favor. You know, I'm a Rotary guy, been a Rotary guy for ten years or so. I favor the smaller design and have kind of hoped for that all along. I do have quite a few friends who post, and some of them share the petitions and the information that's being circulated in opposition. And some of it's pretty entertaining. Actually, one thing, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to read from one of the pieces of paper that circulates with the petition. The proposed building design is large, and there's.
Frank, I just paused real quick. Door, the geest office timer, but let me, for decorum purposes, again, we have three minutes for every individual that's going to be speaking. And again, make sure that your comments, and this goes for everybody, and I just want to say this ahead of time, your comments are directed to either town staff, the engineers and or the town council. So I just want to make sure that that's out there.
Okay. Okay. Well, thanks. And thanks. Thanks very much for the overview. So so I would ask, I would like the Town Council and the people that review this to be aware of some of the things that are circulating. So this is directed to you. So here's here's a artist's conception that to me looks like the Dulles Airport, airport, you know, building. I I don't get a scale from the thing, but it looks, if I had to try to scale it, I would guess it's probably four hundred feet. Pretty big. So that's probably a bit of a miscommunication on the part of the opposition. I'm going to read another thing. Many of the, just like, like, be aware of what's out there. Many of the existing trees, some estimated to be at least three hundred years old, will be removed. I think that's a little bit of a extrapolation, maybe. The events and crowds will generate unacceptable levels of noise for residents near the site. I doubt, given, given what was explained a little while ago about how the approval process will go, that we won't have more events like Pet Fest, Wine and Dine, Truck Night added. I guess they're going to be grandfathered, but, you know. And by the way, you know, Rotary, well, I've been in Rotary. We've not had events like that. Except we have them at the pines. So you know, as long as I'm in Rotary, I don't think we'll have an event like Pet Fest that in the middle of town. And as you said, as Robert, if you, you know, if you go on, if you go on the Healthy West Orange website, you'll see what kind of events they have. And as Robert said, yoga, you know, CPR training. They'll have bike rides, events for kids, coloring events. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Frank. We appreciate your input tonight. Next is, I believe, next up was Byron Sutton, I believe. Was that you, Byron?
Say it again.
Okay, yes, it is.
Don't forget to give us your address, or even though we know where you live.
Okay, I'm Byron Sutton. I'm in Rotary, been in Rotary for fifty five years. I live at five oh five West Second Avenue in Windermere with my wife and the, I also. I live at five oh five West Second Avenue in Windermere with my wife and, uh, the, I, I also am a, uh, Rotarian. The, uh. First off, uh, approximately ten years ago, we were approached, the Rotary Club was approached by the town. In, uh, reference to building something similar to, uh, to what we've, uh, come up with here. And, uh, so this project goes back many years and, uh, several councils. And, uh, uh, we came to, uh, Robert and to the town with a, uh, a plan to, uh. The, as a fiftieth anniversary project for Rotary, that's something we wanted to do. To, uh, donate to the town as a, uh, lasting, uh, remembering thing for, uh, for the Windermere Rotary Club. We'd say, we've been in Rotary, we've been in business for fifty-five years. We've contributed. Over six and a half million dollars to different projects throughout the town and, uh. We were looking for a project to do this. So we formed a committee. As Robert said, and Robert, I appreciate your history, uh, lesson on it, but we put together, uh, a committee. We've met over the last, uh, spent numerous hundreds of hours in the last, uh. Three to five years, uh, developing a plan, uh, for this, which Town Council has, uh, supported overwhelmingly. Uh, and as in fact, have unanimously supported it up to the, uh, throughout the, the years of process. We, uh, we want to, uh, continue, uh, to build the project. We believe that it is something that town could use. It is not our intent to, uh. Force, uh, force anything upon the town, but, uh, we've, uh, attended all the sessions. We've listened to your input. We've changed, uh. From our, uh, original design, we've lowered it dramatically, uh, over the years and, uh, we believe that we've, uh, attempted to, uh. Comply with, uh, with the needs and, and requests of the, uh, the community. The, uh, at a recommendation of the mayor and the. A number of council people, uh, I and, uh, the forty Rotarians or forty-some Rotarians. Uh, reached out to the community and, uh, every corner, I've been to every corner of this town. Uh, we've had over three hundred people sign our petition to, uh, complete the project. Uh, we've had very little, uh, negative, uh, about it. Input from people that we've met with and that, uh, the overwhelming majority of the people that we've met, uh, in the. Residents of the town of Windermere want to see us, uh, build this, uh, build this project and, uh. They have supported the, uh, all the designs that we've had up to this point. And we believe that they still, uh, support it and we would like to, uh. Uh, we would hope that the town council, uh, would, uh, support the, uh, moving the project forward. Is our desire only to, uh, contribute something further to the town on a lasting basis. And, uh, that's. Basically my, my say, the, uh, say we, we have fifty-seven Rotary, Rotary families in the, or in the Windermere. Uh, town area. And I don't know of any of the Rotarians that are, uh, are opposed to it, those, them and their. And I appreciate your help.
Thank you, Byron.
Okay, my wife, Norma, is, uh, has been involved with this also and, uh, she would like to, uh, uh, speak also.
Norma, go ahead.
Okay, Norma Sutton, five oh five West Second Avenue. I would like the town council to know that the Foundation for a Healthier West Orange, whose goal is to be the healthiest community in the nation. Has done everything that it can as far as providing resources. To make sure the residents of West Orange are exposed to healthy West Orange and understand its vast resources. Bob Allen created the Healthy West Orange Campaign. Fred Pryor. Who, before he passed away, was, um, Hunt and Brady Architects. They're providing the design team. Um, they're both from Windermere. So the foundation was very happy to fund this project after the town council and the committees had approved it. So I just want to be sure that you don't lose sight of the opportunity. To expose all of our residents to Healthy West Orange and to its, um, multifunctionality. And to be able to, um, be a participant in this, uh, big major goal. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma. Uh, next up was, uh, Jason.
Yes. Good evening. Uh, Jason Roland, one first court in Windermere, Florida. Um, this is to the town council, mayor and everyone. Um. I'm not a member of Rotary, uh, so I'm just a regular average. Windermere resident with, uh, two kids and a wife and we enjoy. Um, going down to the food trucks. We enjoy a lot of stuff here in town. It's a great place to live. I, uh, did go to the other meetings and there, you know, it's, uh, a bit of a split, um. Feel, I think in our community, some passionate things, one way or the other. But I want to first point out, and I hope, uh, people don't lose sight of it, that, uh, so far, you know. It has been a very democratic process. I was really encouraged to see the Rotary folks come back with a. Reduced footprint design, uh, a symmetrical looking design. I think that design, um, the reduced one is really ideal here. It offers bathrooms, it offers, um, uh. Handicap accessible, uh, storage, a small stage. For things that are not overly large, you know, no three hundred piece orchestras are going to fit on anything we build. Uh, realistically. So i- it's a, it's a nice design and it fits in. I still would like to see that design moved further up if you're looking at the overview. Um, yes, if you move it further up to where the empty lot sort of is behind it, where the old, uh, temporary administration buildings are. I know there's a septic field there, but. I really think putting it back there gives you actually more space for folks to sit, takes advantage of the tree canopy. Um, where the sitting could be under, so you'd be under the trees looking at the stage, which is more in the cleared area. Um, but I don't want to split hairs on that. That's something that the town council should decide later. I think, uh, you know. Maybe not everyone's going to be completely a hundred percent happy with everything all around. But I like it. I would love to see that the town council move expediently on this. Um, get it built, get it going. Let's enjoy it and let's be thankful for, um, all the work the Rotary folks have put in. And, uh, I feel that it's a suitable addition now in this reduced form, um, to the area.
Thank you, Jason. Next up, Mr. Jim Schubert.
Hi, I'm Jim Schubert, uh, town resident at two nine five nine Marquesas Court. Uh, I'm relatively new here. We just moved here in, uh, twenty twenty and. I was a Rotarian in California and joined Rotary here in twenty twenty-one. So I don't, I've just heard about. These things as others have, but I, I, uh, strongly support the project. I like the modified version. I think the footprint is good. Design symmetry is good and I, uh. I think it would be a great addition to the town center to have this kind of facility. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Jim. Next up, uh, Penny Ford. Penny, are you available to comment? We'll go ahead and move to, uh, uh, Valentin Melstrom and we'll come back to Penny.
All right, how you guys doing? So, uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh. Say, first of all, the impression I'm getting now compared to the last meeting is, seems to be mainly Rotarian. Uh, opinions here and, uh. I think the people that were involved last time was that, uh, the opposing. Members, so just wanted to, uh, kind of bring that to, uh, to attention that. Most of the people I know, they are not, they don't want this. It's not something they were even aware of. And I know they're not. Very much involved in the town hall meetings. And I'm coming in pretty late too, because it's been bringing, brought to my attention. So. That's, it can easily get very clickish and we live inside of this social feeds where. We think this is what everybody wants, just because that's what the people in our club wants or that's what the people. So I would just try and, would like to bring that to mind where, how do we get the real numbers? Because people that are showing up here is a very, very small amount of people. Oh, who are actually people in town. And I'm sure Rotary Club has made sure that we have as many people as possible here, since this is a project for. From the Rotary Club, but my, my personal opinion is, uh. To be careful about selling these places to become privatized advertising spaces, pretty much. And I put town and community above. Any organizations that, uh, wants to put their names. I understand it's been around a long time. But, uh, for me, it doesn't really justify it. And I understand the project has gone on quite a while, but, uh, again. I, I hear too many people living around that they're worried about the increase of, uh. Of people and events and all the things that might happen. And yeah, the cost. Of, of accepting money can sometimes have greater, greater costs, you know, these, these gifts. So just to bring a reminder of. What we discussed at the last meeting. So those are my. That's my opinion. I, I, I don't think it's a good idea to build this. Uh, I would like to keep it clean. I don't think, if it's not broken, don't fix it. I think it's a very nice downtown area and we have small companies. Uh, it's, it's evolving. Very slowly, but good. For example, the Brewer is a good example. The people who are sort of opposed to that, it's fitting in very well. And it's local residents and it is a local business that is bringing in, um, people. So, uh, I think we have a lot of those things happening around. Small business is going to pop up. That is very important that everything kind of goes slow and can get a chance to, uh. Be things that the people here actually want. So, yeah, I'm not going to go on and on, but yeah, those are my opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your input tonight. And, um, I may have missed it. Did you give your address when you first started?
No, eleven twenty-seven, uh, Main Street.
Thank you, sir. Just for the record, appreciate it. Um, Penny's up and then Louis, I saw you up there. I did, I won't forget you. I'll come right to you after Penny Ford. Louis, go ahead. You're muted, Louis.
Okay, can you hear me?
We sure can. If you'll give your name and your address for the record. Thank you, sir.
Okay, it's, uh, John Lewis, Witherington, two nine zero two Marquesas Court. I've been a resident of Windermere for over twenty-three years now. I don't own a food truck. I'm not a member of a band. Uh, and also I'm not a member of Rotary either. But I have very strong opinions on this project. I think it's good for the community. I think it's good for, um, property values. I don't see. Any reason at all for the council not to approve this. And unless somebody can tell me otherwise, and I haven't heard otherwise. That this is just a no-brainer and should go through with no snags at all.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your input tonight. Vicky Hurst.
There we go. I think I'm muted now.
You are.
Great, thank you. Um, when they took down the former building that was on that site, we were given a gift of grease, green space that we didn't really anticipate how badly we needed. And, um, I'm pleased to see that this building is smaller. However, I still believe it takes up a lot of green space that we need for the town. Um, if they were able to move it back to the area that's in the, um, dirt area that the guy had marked, then I would not be opposed to it to provided that. It kept in mind that the residents on Forest Street, um, were be, would have sound barriers. So that they do not have additional noise back there. By the way, I don't live downtown. I live at one oh eight two O Bay, Bay Shore Drive. However, I do have friends that live in that area. I'm the president of the Windermere Garden Club and so I do spend a lot of time at Town Hall and in that area. I also volunteer for elder luncheon. So I hear a lot of things from people, especially older people who might not be on here today to speak out for themselves. Um, I believe this building where its location also, also breaks up Town Square. Um, I think that we need bathrooms. I agree wholeheartedly that we need bathrooms, but I think that there's a better location for bathrooms. Which I'd be more than happy to point out if anybody's willing to consider addition, a different option. Um, but I'm opposed to it. I've continued to be opposed to it. Um, the building that was there was a raised foundation. This is going to be a concrete foundation. Um, I just think it's the wrong place for a building in Town Square. We were given a gift, like I said, of the green space. We haven't taken a whole look at the square to see if we can do better. And I think we should take the time to see if we can do better. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. Appreciate that. Sandra G.
Hey, guys. This is not Sandy, this is not Sandy, uh, G. G, this is her friend Sue Ellen Doty and I'm at her computer at her house. And I would like to have three minutes to address, uh, my opposition and my friends, many, many people here that live in downtown. That don't seem to have had their voices heard thus far. Seems pretty Rotarian to me. And all I want to say is I don't know, Jim, if you got the, my map. And all of the council people that we sent to Dorothy this afternoon. Because, or yesterday afternoon, because it's very important for you to understand. That this is, maybe I need to turn on the video. Sorry, maybe you can see this. Uh, there are a lot of people opposed to this project. Can you see? Can you put this up?
I, I can see you now.
Okay.
And couns- council did receive, uh, the map.
All right. What we would like to say, there's a hundred and eighty-three signatures of people that said no. And as you can tell by the red dots, I don't think anyone can see this. It's still on the picture of. Of, uh, the revised version of the pavilion. Can you see this? Can you put this up for me?
Well, we, no, we can't share you. Uh, we, we can't, we don't have the capability. We're, we're good, but we don't have the capability to do that.
What I'm going to say is you all noticed in that map that it was not only the numbers of people downtown and the households. But it was the location. Now, I can't say, I certainly don't have three hundred signed in the petition for it. The one that I saw, but the one that I saw has most of the signatures in Estancia. Uh, in, uh, let's see, Down Point Lane, Jennifer Lane. The new addition to Pine Street, north of Pine Street, and then the west part of Second Avenue. There were only nineteen. I don't know where all these other people that they know live downtown are for, because I think. Uh, five of us, four of us live on Forest and you know, we're going to be the most impacted probably. And then one person right around the corner, we, uh, went through all of the heat and the rain and we knocked on all kinds of doors. And I remember, I think it was Vicky that said, so many residents of Windermere are not Zoom members. They don't even, uh, they don't email. I will tell you, as much as you had all of these meetings, most of them during COVID, it seems. No one knew about it. I didn't know about it. So we set out to find out how many people knew about it and how many people were for it. And all of those pictures they're putting up has all that beautiful canopy behind it of trees. How many of those trees are going to be taken down? Does anybody know?
Time, time.
Well, we'll get that answer for you.
Uh, there's a lot of people who do not want this project. And so far I've only heard one person. That's really adamant against it. And I think that that is not what's so in this beautiful, uh, close. Uh, town here in Windermere. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Carter.
Hi there. Susan Carter, one oh six Palm Street. Um, as a resident, I'm opposed to this project. Um. It was an unintentional, unintentional consequence when we took down the, uh, gray building. And ended up with all this green space. It has become more community space. It's opened it up, um. A building is always more than a building. It's concrete sidewalks. It's less space to plant trees. So we don't have an impact on these sidewalks. There's going to be less canopy with the structure. Speaking, um, I'm grateful, speaking for Treeboard, I'm grateful for. John Fitzgibbon and the efforts he's made to go out there and save every tree he could with a larger project. I haven't had any information on what a smaller project and what the impact would be on the trees that are currently there. Again, we would lose canopy and we're not able to replace canopy with a few new trees coming in. That, um, will make up for the level that we have lost. Also, as far as Treeboard goes, even though it was not a unanimous decision, we did vote that we were opposed. To this structure. And, um. And as i- any structure actually, so I just wanted to make that record. and as i- any structure actually, so I just wanted to make that record. That's uh
Thank you, Susan. Did you give your address?
Yes.
Okay, she did. Thank you, Susan. I appreciate that. Um, Chuck Hobbs.
Yes, um, can you hear me?
Yes, very well, sir.
All right. Uh, I'm in favor of the new design. Uh, my address is one one zero West Seventh Avenue, Windermere. Um, I'm in favor of the new smaller design. I was not in favor of the larger design. The canopy behind the buildings are, they are important. Um, so adjustment of location, if possible, should be considered, I would think. The other thing that I have a concern about is safety for the restrooms, use of the restrooms when obviously the the stage is not going to be used often. So during truck night and other events, the restrooms um will be used constantly. Um, and during even when there are not events uh, ongoing during the day in the past, the restrooms were open. So safety around the restrooms is seems important. Um, and I'm not sure that it can be addressed uh, at this stage, but um so pushing these restrooms back or to the side or off to a corner seems more um uh, would not be necessarily a safer environment. But safety, the smaller design, uh, I'm in favor of.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate uh, your input as well. Nora.
Hi, Nora Brophy, four twenty-six Magnolia Street. As a resident, I'm opposed to this pavilion. Um, as Susan said, when the old community center was torn down, we received this incredible gift of this beautiful green space, which turned our Town Hall area into a really spacious sort of lovely uh, area. And I don't think we should put a building right in the middle of it, which is going to completely bifurcate all of the green space as well as take down a lot of tree canopy. Well, I know when we do events at this area, everybody is searching for shade. So whether it's pet fest or run among the lakes, everybody wants to be in the shade and removing a whole lot of shade is going to ru- ruin our event space. Um so I I think the town should look at more of a a a um, a a master plan for that downtown town area. I mean, what do we want it to look like? Do we want big events there? Do we want smaller events there? Um, how do we, how do we protect the people on Forest Street from all of the traffic? I I mean, I just feel like we're sort of rushing headfirst into we take down a building, we put up a building and that building is not necessarily in the right place. So I would hope the town council would vote no to this. Um, we can return the funds to healthy West Orange and uh, live to fight another day. Thank you.
Thank you, Nora. Appreciate your input as well. Um, Deborah Neal.
Hi, this is Deborah Neal, five two five Oakdale Street. Um, I would go with the choice of not moving forward with this project and return the cost that has already been spent. I don't think we need another building. We, I will certainly agree with those who said that uh, we have a gift of green space that you can't get anywhere else. And I think having that green space there is better for my property value than having yet another building on that piece of earth that we have there for Town Hall. It's beautiful and I like to keep it there. And um, as far as bathrooms, if we, I think we should just not take, not do the grant at all. If we decide we went bathrooms, let's do a site-wide analysis, figure out what's the best place to put them, the safest place, and uh, save every tree we can and have shade and green area. And that's what makes us special. And that's what I would like to do.
Thank you, Deborah. Doug Fay. Doug, you're muted, sir.
You got me now?
We do.
Okay, I live at five oh six Butler Street. It's about a block west of the proposed pavilion. I'm totally against it. I don't think it's anything Windermere needs. Uh, it's going to create a traffic problem, a noise problem. Right now, I've got noise coming from the island and to the west and the pavilion from the east. So I'm kind of right in the middle of everything and uh, I've lived here for sixty-seven years and I'm not even sure where Marquesas Court is. We've had two callers from there and I'm sure they they can't hear it when when it gets going. So uh, I'm just totally opposed to it and I hope I hope the council votes that way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your input. Anime Clowns.
Hi, um, I want to say that um, my husband and I did not have a chance to sign the petition opposed to the pavilion because we're out of state. Um, but that's two more names. Um, I'm completely opposed to this. Um, I'm actually shocked when I hear the history of how far back this planning went. Um, I certainly don't remember any charrettes or meetings back in the planning stage um before this was accepted and and money was spent. Um, I'm I'm really shocked about that. Um, I appreciate the the meetings that we've had since. Um, I live at six thirty-two Butler Street. I live next to Fernwood Park. Um, it's become a complete nightmare um, over the years. I have to say, I've been in the town for thirty-six years. Uh, when I first lived in the town, uh, there was a lot of contention and um, opposition to annexing in um, surrounding areas. And the reason was, and anyone who lived in the town at town at that time knew that people would be voting for things that happened in downtown Windermere who don't live in downtown Windermere. I hear Doug Fay. He lives very close to this. I live close enough. I have a little bit of a buffer, but I think I heard you say that uh, food trucks have been suspended uh, for the time being to kind of give a break and a pause because it is an issue. Anytime we're bringing in the greater uh, area into our town, there's noise, there's traffic, uh, there's it it's it's not, it's not in the best interest of the surrounding community. I'm actually pretty surprised uh, looking at who's on this call and who's raised their hands because a lot of the people who have spoke before um, are not here. Um, or at least their hands aren't up yet and I kind of, I have that feeling of I I give up. There's a lot of pressure um, from outside um, the surrounding area. Um, and you know, there is a downside to this and there's a downside to the surrounding residents. If you wanted to put this over in the middle of some other area, maybe I wouldn't be opposed. But it's where we live. So I just want to say I'm a hundred percent opposed to this. I've been opposed to it. And I'm just asking the council if they're not sure tonight to delay the vote at least uh, because this does affect the surrounding community. Thank you.
Thank you, Anime. Penny Ford, are you with us?
She is not muted.
Yeah, I don't, I think she must be having a problem. I I see, I keep seeing her clicking and out. I know she wants to provide some input, so we'll we'll try back again. Um, Zoe Valon.
Hi, good evening. This is Zoe and actually Felipe's here as well. Uh, we live at two six one seven Carter Grove Circle. So we are one of those people who's part of Windermere, but kind of living outside the town um, area. Um, we're very against it. Um, we love living in Windermere because of the dirt roads and the trees and the shade and the lakes and all that that brings. We never chose to live here because of a building or a structure or a shop. We chose to come to the countryside. Um, I spend a lot of time downtown and I walk my dogs as I'm sure many of you have seen me with two big Rhodesians. And we we follow the tree path. We follow the canopy. My dogs literally run from shade to shade, and that's part of living in Windermere is to have that whole um, experience of enjoying the of nature and our tree canopy and all that that can afford. Um, I think when the building was taken down, I think as many people have said, we had a discovered something that we didn't know that we had. And I think that we need to be very careful before we put a building and back up and then we regret and we, there's no going back. Once the building is up, it's up and um, we can't take that back. So um, I have participated at a lot of these meetings. I have never said anything, but um, today absolutely I feel that you know, there's a lot of voices, a lot of Rotarians who are talking for the project, which I completely understand. It's their passion. It's something they've put forward.
Okay, rice is done. Now.
One second, we had to add a mute Anime. She's she's I guess cooking dinner.
Go ahead, uh, Zoe. Zoe, I think you're muted now. Did did you finish your um, comment or did you have, did you have addition? We lost you a little bit.
Okay, I'm back. Um, we were away for four years in California. And I have to say, when we came back, we were so happy to be back in Windermere and the town of the Windermere and all that the town brings. And it's it's a hidden jewel and it should be cherished. And I don't think adding another building is what the town needs right now.
This is Felipe.
Thank you, Zoe.
Zoe's Zoe's husband. Um, uh, I am absolutely opposed to this. Uh, we have, we have a very special town, a wonderful feel to our 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 small community. It's why we all uh, chose to live here. Um, this reminds me of that famous song, uh, they paved paradise and put up a parking lot. Um, that this is totally against what Windermere is. Um, the traffic is going to bring uh, more more people from the outside. You're going to turn this into Lake Eola. And I don't think that's why we all moved here. We enjoy this very, very special town. There aren't many places this wonderful and beautiful in America. Um, and this would be a shame to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. B E. Or B, I don't know which. Beer muted. Still muted.
I'm not sure if it's me. It might be Bridget. This is Bridget Matthews. I'm at four twenty Butler Street. Um, my family and I have lived here my whole life. Um, we are absolutely opposed to this. It's like my husband says, we have to drive through a parking lot just to get to our house every day between the brewery and the farmer's markets and people walking back and forth and having no regard that it is a street and they just think it's a parking lot. So we are one thousand percent opposed to this and would like it to just stay as it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. So there still is a B E or a B there. I don't know. Um all right. Bob McKinley.
Thank you, sir. Bob McKinley, five three six Magnolia Street, Windermere. Uh, in reviewing the plans on this thing, we've reduced it in size from nineteen hundred to fifteen hundred forty-six square foot. That's a reduction of eighteen percent. Not the fifty percent that a lot of people were told. And you know, eighteen percent, it it's still big. That's number one. Number two, I agree that when we took the community building down, which was smaller than what is now being proposed, we discovered the green space and it's an open space around Town Hall. That whole area fits in with the character of Windermere. Windermere is a very unique community. Let's keep it that way. Hmm, I am totally in favor of abandoning this project, scrap it. Uh, once an itemized list is produced and reviewed by council, then we pay the bill and continue to march. But uh, we do not need this down there. If we build it, I assure you, they will come. And I'm opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. C T Allen.
Hi, C T Allen, six eleven West Second Avenue. Um, and you've heard my voice before. So I think there's good intentions on both sides. So I'm just one voice and one opinion. Uh, but I do run two major events that Music Among the Lakes and Windermere Wine and Dine. As much as on the flip side that people, you know, want to build this building, one, it really does hinder the green space to be creative with event planning. So I'm going to speak from the event producer side. Um, Wine and Dine was able to have the most successful uh, event that they've ever had because we had the creativity to be able to expand out into the area once the community room came down. If you replace the community room with another building, you really are cutting off a third of the space that can be utilized. Everything behind this building is not going to be able to be utilized. Um, because you can't, you know, for events, you you're not going to have a pet fest or a wine and dine. You're not going to put a restaurant behind this building. Uh, Music Among the Lakes, it's a no, it's just a no-go. A forty-piece orchestra, uh, we had to construct a forty by eighty-foot tent and they barely fit in it with all the power and then they had to bring out from that. Um, so no, I I would love to take a holistic approach to the total grounds. I think when the community room came down, it did. It showed everybody the potential of Town Square. So I think we take that potential now. We back away and like I said, I know there was good intentions on both sides. So but don't keep going down a road that we're going to stare at something that everybody's going to be disappointed with because it's only been used five days out of the year. The major events in town have all said this hinders our event planning. It can't be used for the four major events right now. But if we take a look at the total Town Square later, just push it down the road. Let's really get a committee together that's going to be creative and go, hey, are the basketball courts in the right place? Maybe we do need a ban shell, but not there. Maybe we do need bathrooms. I'm not so sure about that. Um, I just would like to just take a break, a pause, apologize and say thank you, but it just doesn't work right now and have everyone really look at the space holistically. So that's my two cents on this, that I am opposed to any building replacing the community room in that location at all. That's it. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, C T. Kim Campbell. Kim, you're muted. Still muted. It came off, but then went right back on. Kim, one more shot. It it's still muted. All right, Kim. Kim, we'll come back to you and see if we can get that unmuted. All right. Um, Penny Ford, are you there? Penny Ford, are you there? Okay. And one more time for either B E or B.
Hi, this is Bonnie Elder. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. I didn't know who it was.
How my name got in there like that and I'm very, I'm not a very checky person, so I'm glad. Bonnie Elder, 3340 South Lake Butler Boulevard. And I've lived in this town with my family for over 50 years now and have seen the library built from when it used to be the softball and baseball fields and when the community room was my library and Tim's Wine Store was the ready market. And so I've seen a lot of changes in the town and I think that you know, at this point, what we've done and with the recent brewery and how things have been gone about have been done great. I am a member of the Holiday Hoopla Committee. And and so I do plan events around the downtown. And I don't think that this structure kind of like C T had said would benefit our event. And I definitely don't think it's in the right space. I think it bifurcates the downtown area. And even my, our 12-year-old son heard about what was happening and he said, Mom, please don't let them build this structure in that location. And I hope that he's somebody that will come back and live in the town and he just loves the green space down there now that that room is gone. I know that the intentions have been great for wanting to put something that the community and everybody will use. And I thank everybody for all the hard work, you know, putting, being on projects. I know that it takes a lot of time and energy. So thank you to those that have, have done that. But I also agree with C T and the fact that I think it'd be nice to have a little roundtable discussion or people that would like to be on some type of mini-board to discuss the whole area downtown and what would be good for our, our place move, you know, for our community moving forward. And when you put a permanent structure in, you can't get rid of it. And you can always bring in permanent structures and take them down, but to put something concrete there forever would really be a shame, I think, for that newly recognized green space. And I guess my, my last comment just, you know, we talked about Healthy West Orange and all the things that they do and could do. We have Okoye and Winter Garden and Dr. Phillips very close to us where there's community events hosted by Healthy West Orange that I think would be, we can easily access a lot of their programs close by.
Thank you, Bonnie. Appreciate your input.
Thank you.
We'll go back to Kim Campbell. Kim, you're muted.
Okay, I think I figured it out.
You got it. You sound good now. Okay.
Okay, Kim Campbell, 611 Forest Street. I'm just calling in completely against it. I am so close to the food trucks and so close to all the events that it just concerns me on more noise and you know, we deal with a lot of the renting out of the Town Hall and the base and the music and it just, whether it's one event and if it's just one event, then why do we even have it? Or if it just leads to more and more events, it's just more and more traffic and noise that we have to worry about. And I appreciate Robert and putting up, you know, when we have these events again, putting up signs, you know, I have people pulling and hitting my fence and, you know, pulling into our yards and we clean up trash like we've talked about every time there's food truck night. We have kids in our yard, you know, it's just a lot and whether or not it's one event or it turns into what, you know, a bunch of other events, it's just one more thing I just feel like we don't need. And those of us on Forest and this side just have the biggest impact of it. And I heard a lot of people that were for it. They don't live in downtown Windermere. They, it doesn't affect them. And like somebody said, you know, you know, it was built far, far away, you know, I'm not sure, you know, how I would feel. You know, but I appreciate like Zoe and people like that who don't live close calling in and being opposed to it. So just wanted to get my two cents in on that and just kind of cut us some slack here on Forest. I mean, without these food trucks this summer, I have to tell you, it's been so nice. And I know our town residents are, you know, great when they come, but a lot of times either people coming who don't live in our town and don't respect, you know, picking up their trash and things like that. So just consider my point of view and I hope that you guys are opposed to it and thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate that. And there is a, another Kim. I can guess, maybe I'm trying to guess which one, but Kim.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. I'm Kim Hawkinshead, 817 Main Street. We've lived here since 2005, strongly oppose, just say no to this building for all the reasons people said. We have three little babies in our house, three under two. We use this to run out the kids so they fricking go to sleep at night. We do not want any more reason for people to drive on Main Street with our kids living here and learning how to walk, et cetera. So it's a hard no for, from our whole household. Thank you, everyone. That's it. No.
All right, seeing no other hands up for public comment at this time. I'm gonna swap over to council and begin our discussion. Council, so you have, you know, basically our objectives tonight. This is not a voting meeting. This is a workshop and an opportunity and I always, I always say it, but I'll, I'll say it again for the benefit of those that may not have heard. You know, there's a lot of opportunities for members of the public to speak and amongst themselves and talk about these important issues. There's not the same opportunity for council members to, to speak amongst themselves. We're limited in, in our ability to share our opinions with each other to these workshops and publicly noticed meetings. So these meetings are important for us to be able to kind of talk amongst ourselves, get questions answered, find out a little bit more about what concerns are in the community and what concerns other council people have heard. Concerns, support, ideas, thoughts, all of that. And that is what's very, very important to what we do here tonight at these workshops. So again, no voting will take place tonight, but what we do have a responsibility to do is to begin to give staff direction in terms of which way to proceed or, or not to proceed. So that is, again, that is, that is why we are here tonight. Tom, I see you have your hand up first, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, it's, I tell you, it is very difficult being on this end as a town council because before I was just basically on a megaphone in the middle of the street telling everybody my opinion. And now I can't even hardly talk about it anymore. So I really do appreciate this time to talk now. So I'm just gonna vent on some of the things that I've been thinking about based on my conversations with, well, one-way conversations, I should say, with residents who give me their opinions. And I will acknowledge and I have before that some of us did come late to the game. I will say this though, I have been to almost every town council meeting and I even early on, there was some discussion about this, but there was never any public input until recently. And I know that we, since public has become aware of it, it has been overwhelmingly in opposition to it. So I have to say that maybe there was not a lot of objection to it before it became public knowledge. But since it's become public knowledge, it's been overwhelmingly in opposition to it. At least I have only received one email from anybody saying they wanted it. And tonight was the first time, except maybe one or two other times in public forums that I've heard anybody even speaking for it. So I can tell you this, if, if I was not a town councilperson and somebody was just trying to show me the facts and numbers, it would, it would be pretty telling to see that the residents that are affected by this and even most other residents that live in Windermere are highly opposed to it for a lot of reasons. I don't take anything away from the Rotary. They have done a lot. I think their intention was genuine. I just don't believe it's what the residents want. And I, once again, I say that and I can honestly sit here and say that I have had, had not had conversation with anybody and all conversations are just one-sided in spite of how much I want to say things. Because I don't want to change anybody's opinion necessarily based on my position. But I will say this also in light of those adjustments, those very minor adjustments that were made. I know Bob pointed out it was 18%, but you know, 400 or 500 square feet does not change the impact of the building. Because it's not the footprint. And I talked to Brad Cornelius about this. I said, it's not the, it's not the footprint of the building, it's the impact of the building. It could be, you know, 3,000 square feet daycare as opposed to 3,000 square foot nightclub. So it's not really the size of it, it's the impact of it. And this, any way you try to redefine it, it's an amphitheater. It's designed to increase sound. That's really, it's designed to increase sound, draw a crowd, increase traffic, all three of the things nobody in Windermere wants, even the people voting for it do not want that in their neighborhood. I can assure you, those that I have talked to it that are in favor of it, when I asked if they wanted it on their street, the answer is always no. So I don't know why we, as town council would want to put something in. Because downtown Windermere is still 95% residential. So we're really placing an amphitheater in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And don't forget, we're going to be impacted hugely by the Sixth and Main development there too, which is a done deal and I'll embrace it once it's here like I do everything else. But if we are pausing for food trucks because of the problems the food trucks are creating, well, one, we need to readdress the food trucks, first of all. Maybe, maybe there's something we need to do there that's different, even though I do go to the food trucks. But if we're pausing because of problems the food trucks are creating, then it makes no sense to me to build another venue that would do, create the same problems. It's still 20 feet tall. The drawings look very similar to me. I'm not an architect, but the drawings look very similar to me. And I don't think that the, I don't think that we have, I know there was some variances they could make based on the grant. But it doesn't sound to me like they were able to make much. And I think this is probably as small as it could possibly get and still with, stay within the parameters of the grant and 400 or 500 square feet is, is not very significant to me. And like I said, for me, it's the, it's the impact more than the footprint. Truthfully, I think, I mean, we have had a lot of meetings about this and I'm glad because I think that's the way it should go. I know one of the other callers mentioned the fact they love the diplomacy of it and so do I. But I do believe that, in my opinion, as a town councilperson, I'm asking for a vote. I'm just saying my opinion. I think that we should stop any further development or design and move forward with the future bathroom design that's funded by the town. Itemize the debt, repay the grant. And once again, it's not a motion. It's just my opinion, what I think we should do at this point forward because the only other alternative is to have another workshop or take this to a vote in the open town council. So I just think we need to stop the process. I think we need to itemize the bill, repay the grant and move forward with the future bathroom design that's funded by the town.
Thank you, Tom. Just so everyone's clear tonight, I want to make sure that everybody knows, you know, from a council perspective, what, what we're providing guidance on. It's, it's basically the 45% design of the, the larger building. The smaller footprint building. A totally different building or no building at all in refunding the money. Those, those are the, the three, the four things rather that, that we're gonna, you know, hopefully provide staff with some consensus on tonight. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows what we're, what we're discussing. There's no discussion really tonight of, of bathrooms or anything like that. That would be a further discussion at another time, depending on the options that council provides guidance on. You know, we can always talk about anything, but just the, you know, just so we're all a little focused on how do we proceed here? How do we get movement? One way or another on the, on the topic at hand tonight. Next up is
And so was it clear that what I wanted then, except for the bathroom stuff? I want to itemize the debt, repay the grant and stop any further development or design?
That would be number four for you, right?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilperson David.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, so, um, you know, it's kind of been overwhelming the last few weeks on the feedback of this. I wish we would have gotten it earlier, you know, because early on in the, in the development of this and, you know, Robert went through the history. I was, uh, you know, a big proponent of this in concept. Now, when we got the initial design of the larger pavilion, that kind of, that, that optimism from my part was kind of quenched because of the impact it has on Town Square. Subsequent to that, you know, I've, I've had some discussions with members of Rotary, with John and, you know, was pushing for a much smaller footprint that optimized the use of the area. The design that popped out tonight in the smaller footprint, quite honestly, doesn't look that much different than the original design. It may be smaller, but as Bob McKinley said, you know, it's only 18% smaller. It's still, you know, for all intents and purposes, has the same impact to Town Square. A couple of things that have resonated with me in the discussions, both tonight and, and the ones I've had around town are, are twofold. One, the, the placement of this building and how it affects the overall layout of Town Square. I, I don't like the fact that it does cut off the basketball court area from the green space in the back. I, I think the placement is, it just, it just is not a good use of space. The other one is, uh, you know, something that C T said tonight as well is let's look at this holistically. You know, are the, are the basketball courts in the right place? Is this placement in the right spot? You know, so I, I think we have more, more work to do. If, if the grant timeline is driving us into a bad decision, I think we just need to stop, just to halt that decision and, and kind of take a step back a little bit and evaluate this. As several have said tonight, this is a, you know, a significant step forward, putting a pleased piece of brick and mortar infrastructure into Town Square. So in order to do it, I think we need to do it right. So I, I don't support the original design. As I mentioned, I don't think the smaller design is that much different from the original dot design that I support it. If the Healthy West Orange grant is, timeline is driving us to choose one or none, then I'm afraid tonight I'm gonna have to choose none.
Thank you, councilperson David.
One question though, Mayor, if I, if I may, sorry. What, what do we owe? We asked the, um, the design team to kind of figure out what are, what we would owe Healthy West Orange if we ceased movement forward. Have we gotten that number yet?
Yeah, we received, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, we received their initial payments and it equals up to about $97,212 and I believe that there is about 48,000, 49,000 of unpaid invoices. The contracts, we reviewed those as well. A lot of the work was beyond the scope, meaning that they didn't anticipate having to do as much on these when the plans were needed to be revised and so on and so forth, since they were going based on the prior approval. So that's why that number initially, when we have it at 45% is so high. But we're still going to sit down with Rotary Inc. and Healthy West Orange. Your max out of pocket is going to be about 157 if we're not able to negotiate or compromise down that number.
Well, yeah, and, and we could talk about this offline, Robert, you know, and I'd like to be involved in those negotiations if possible, but you know, if, if they, if they pursued design above the 45%, I'm not sure that the town should be liable for that. It's clearly written in our contract that we have approval authority at the 45% point.
Yes, sir, agreed. And that's in their scope of services as well.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Over to you.
Thank you, Tony. Appreciate that. Robert, what, what is the timeline? You know, what is our flexibility here in terms of the funding agreement? I know initially it was a, it was a two or three-year agreement. Where are we at with that? I know we talked a little bit about that earlier, but I just want to clarify for everyone.
It was a three-year agreement, so the expiration date is May of 2024. But we would have to work with Healthy West Orange and the Rotary Inc. on extending that. You know, there's various, you know, things that we couldn't control. You know, again, we had the pandemic in the middle of this. So we would ask for at least some sort of condition in the contract for an extension. You know, I think that Rotary Inc. and Healthy West Orange would just like to have the pavilion constructed. But they're trying to line it up, I think Rotary Inc. with their, their anniversary.
Sure, understood. Yeah, and, and I think part of this conversation of, you know, evolves around the fact, you know, there's, there's, there were several individuals who talked about overall master type planning, which is, which is always an admirable task, but you can master plan all you want. If there's no money at the other side of that, you can't do anything. So you know, I would like to be in a situation where if we were going to do some planning or adjustments, there was at least monies to be able to facilitate the outcomes of those potentially. Otherwise, it's not a lot of fun to master plan.
Correct. And I think that's what occurred here was in two thousand twenty, when the Rotary, DRB took it up and then LRP took it up. And then town council at the time took it up with the approval of the proposal. And then they took that to Healthy West Orange.
Agreed. Yeah. And you know, and that is important. And I know that there's, there's some conversations, I, I want to be clear. All of these meetings, all of these conversations took place at public meetings where the public was, was noticed and invited. I think part of the, part of the confusion on that is I think it became a bigger issue once the existing community room was removed. And I think that sparked more interest. I think when you're replacing an ugly building, I think everyone's would say the community building was not a beautiful piece of architecture. And then you go to, to replace it with a new building, there's less opposition than potentially wanted is an empty space that, that is more green. So councilperson Rose.
Hi. Um, I first heard about this when I was on long-range planning. And at the time, we never, ever thought there was going to be any money to do it. So to tell you the truth, I just ignored it and probably a lot of other people did. I am opposed to it. I think that the money also will be looked at more closely. I've, I've looked at it. Thank you, Robert. And I don't think it's going to be near a hundred and fifty thousand, but that's really not relevant. We're actually very fortunate that we can afford this. I think more importantly is that we've learned that early on in a project, when something comes up, the town really needs to put it out to the public and, and we've done so much better, guys. We really haven't improved this. But we, we, and we will then look at these projects early on, so nobody wastes their time and money on it. I don't think it's a slight against Rotary or Healthy West Orange. We just didn't really look at it and understand what was coming. But I am not in, in a favor. I think it'll increase traffic. I think it'll increase the noise. And that's not the kind of town we are. If people want that, maybe they should be living in Winter Garden or Lake Heola or somewhere where they have the infrastructure to support it, because we just don't. I think also that what else can I say? That it, it doesn't really matter where we move it. In all of our events, we, if we need a stage, we rent them. And if we build a stage, I think future councils and town managers may allow bigger functions to come into town, which will only create problems for the residents. This is a resident, resident town, you know, that's the way it's set up. That's the way, and we're already dealing with too much traffic from things that we can't control. This thing we can control. So I agree with Tom, I agree with Tony, and I am saying no, do not move forward with this project. Thank you.
Councilperson Rose, is that in, in option four or an option three-ish feeling?
Oh, what is four and three?
I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Mayor.
Three is, uh, three's like a
No, number four, do nothing, return to the cost spent to date. And but like Tony, I, I've already reviewed their bills. I have a lot of issues with them. And so I don't think it's going to be on the high end if we look at this more closely.
Good. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Councilperson Williams.
Hey, Mayor. Thank you. First off, I'm on, you know, I'm with, on the number four. I don't think we should do anything. I was there in two thousand nineteen when it came to council. It was a different environment back then. I think if this project would have gotten off the ground in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, and we were just replacing the building, I think it might have happened, but things have changed. Covid brought us back to a quiet town and I think a lot of the neighbors, especially the ones that are close to Town Square, started to really enjoy and remember what it used to be. I, we are seeing an overwhelming push against this. I think the town, a lot of people in town are just over a lot of our events. I think I come in and admin for canceling food trucks for the summer. I think it was a great idea. I think we need to look at maybe cutting those back even some more. You know, and look at all what they bring in and, and are they worth it? But yeah, I'm, I'm on the position, let's do nothing, return the money. If it's a hundred and fifty, it's a hundred and fifty. It, it'll be well worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, councilperson Williams. Andy David.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be short and sweet. I will probably be the one that was the only one probably that was really for the pavilion. I'm, I'm with everybody else, though. Unfortunately, with the overwhelming nays to it, I just, I, I can't in good conscience be okay with moving forward when the residents don't want it. I still think it's a great idea. I think it would be a benefit to the town, but the residents have been heard in this and I, I don't know. My feeling is with everybody else, but I'm most likely number four.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the input. You know, I I wrestle with this. I, I really feel like I feel like we're taking out some displeasure on events on a, on a pavilion, but you know, certainly I do hear all the feedback, respect all of that feedback. I wish we could go to, to take a different look at it and a better look at it, but you know, I think it's pretty clear that, that council doesn't feel that way. So I understand that. And I think you know, I think that we will probably you know, in some ways maybe regret because you know, there's a lot of issues with you know, are, you, you're basically telling a, a funding source that we're not a viable place for them to provide funding. They're the largest funder in, in West Orange. And I think they want to be a good community partner. It's my hope that we'll get the opportunity to do something you know, good in the future with them. I, you know, I, I think of lots of opportunities like our, our linear park and the Ward Trail and, and, and those type of things that we've tried to work really hard on to bring, you know, kind of quiet enjoyment to town. You know, I really look at, certainly I think we're gonna need to look at events and the, the size of the events and, and that's going to impact some of the committee's events as well. I certainly hate to give back money, whether it's fifty thousand, a hundred thousand or, or whatever. That's certainly money that we could spend on trees. It's certainly money that we could spend on, on managing Fifth Avenue Park and some of the challenges that, that we have there and I, I, you know, I, I really do from a fiscal standpoint, hate to give up many of our reserves for something that gives us no dividend. Not opposed to spending it when it gives us something good, but when it gives us nothing, that's, that's a, that's a bitter pill a little bit. So you know, I wish we could come to a little better place on this, but I think council is clear. So certainly respect to, to all involved. I appreciate the, the very nice discourse this evening, the respectful discourse on all sides of, of what I know has become a pretty, a pretty contentious issue. And, and I hope that everyone make sure that we return back to normal operations. You know, we appreciate all the, always all the good input, but I want to make sure that, that we leave it friendly. Robert, I, does that give staff everything they need?
Yes, sir. We'll bring it back for formal vote at the July town council meeting, just to move forward with the option four.
I agree.
And I'll have the numbers by then as well as far as shoring up what is owed back to the district.
Yep. Okay, appreciate that. I see councilperson David's hand up.
No, I was just gonna offer again, Robert, that if you need some help going through those numbers, let me know.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. Yeah, we'll want to look at those pretty hard and make sure we that we, you know, only return what we absolutely have to return. I also want to make sure that we think the Rotary and their, they're bringing the, the opportunity to at least discuss this gift to, to town. It's a million dollar gift, is a big gift and I, I look forward to maybe the potential of being able to do something again in the future. Councilperson Stroop, I see your hand up.
Yeah, so I'm still going to be in upstate New York in July. Can I not vote if I'm not present?
You have to be present to vote.
Okay, because I put in the notice before I left, questioning whether or not I need to be there or not for the vote. I'll, I'll give, I'll give Robert a call.
Yeah, well, we could talk about, we'll discuss that, but I, you know, unfortunately, it's state statute. It says you have to be present to vote. That is why we have to do all town council meetings in person.
Yeah, yeah, no, I wasn't challenging that. I was just, I was just
No, I was just wanting you to know the, you know, it's not just, not some rule that, you know, we came up with. It's, it's under state statute.
Because member Stroop too, right now the consent is five zero. So if, you know, the town council were to change their minds within a matter of three weeks, then they could always postpone it to when there's a full council for a vote. And that would be in August, but based on the consent tonight, it looks like July would be when we give final notice to Rotary Inc. and let them know we'll be repaying the fines or paying the funds.
Okay, thanks, Robert.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mayor.
Hey, no problem, Tom. Enjoy your vacation. I wish I was up there, man. Any, any additional input from council tonight? Seeing none, okay. Any additional staff input?
No, sir. Just a reminder, we have our July fourth pancake breakfast on July fourth.
That sounds good. We'll look forward to seeing everybody there. And with that, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we will close our town council workshop at seven forty-three P M. I want to thank everybody for participating and providing such a, you know, active and, and a good input. Thank you all.
Thanks, everybody.
We're adjourned.